Greetings and welcome to this episode of Bring It On. My name's Bob Hayes and I'm going to be your show host for today's show. I'm doing a series on candidates that are running for elected offices in both the towns of Whitman and Hanson. We are offering it up to any and all candidates that would like to be brought on Bring It On. And the reasoning for this would be to showcase what they do and who they are so the people know when it comes time to vote who they'd like to vote for. Today's show, I have Shawn Kane with me. He's a candidate for Board of Selectment in the town of Whitman. Shawn, how are you?
Great, thanks for having me.
Hey, thanks for being here. It's good to have you and it's good for the candidates to come on so the people can really see who you are. Can you give us a little history about Shawn Kane and family, you know, starting from maybe youth to today?
Yeah.
People like to know. It seems to be a thing of they want to know the candidate. And I think it's wonderful because they should know who they're voting for. It's a big job.
Yeah.
And it's a tough job.
Yeah. Well, both my grandparents owned a house in Whitman. So my parents both grew up down in Homeland Drive. So I was raised there and I love the neighborhood. I have two sisters. We all went to Whitman-Hanson. I grew up playing baseball, youth baseball. I was on Whitman News, you know, all that stuff. I played football for Whitman-Hanson, you know, and I loved it. Had an awesome team. I was a big wrestler. So sports in the community was definitely played a big role in my love for the town, for sure. My wife and I, we met each other in high school, so we're high school sweethearts. We've been together since then. Jill's from Hanson. And it's funny because I really was not a great student in high school, not until... I actually won the... Do you happen to remember the Alton Taylor Award?
Oh, of course I do. As you know, I sat on that stage for a long time as a school committee member and the Alton Taylor Award is something that got presented all the time.
Right. It's kind of like most improved. So I won that award and it was really a big surprise because the first couple of years in high school, I really, I think more naturally working my hands and that kind of thing. My father owned a restaurant, you know, that was what I enjoyed doing. It wasn't until like my senior year, I was a captain on the wrestling team. I kind of came into my own and became a very good student since, really.
Well, that's great. Move on, transition from high school to adult life. As if any of us have this adult life that we could speak of.
Yeah. Well, I went to college up in New Hampshire. I wrestled. Jill went to Saint Ays. I was at Plymouth State. And then we came back. We owned a house, small house in Hanson for a little bit, and then ultimately bought in Whitman. We've been here for, you know, forever. So, yeah, we're both teachers. We're both special ed teachers. So it's something that I've found pretty quickly that there's a certain aspect of teaching, specifically alternative ed. So it's a subset of special education that you kind of need the right personality, but if it fits, it happens to fit with me and I just love it. I've been part of alternative ed my whole career. This is actually my 22nd year teaching.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah.
Alternative education is a big part of any education in a public school, as we all know. But this is about you, Shawn. What makes a guy, a homegrown guy like you, wife, you've got children?
Yeah.
Else a little bit about?
Yeah, my son Braden, he's at the high school. He's a junior, football, wrestling, baseball, having a great experience there. My daughter actually goes to the agricultural school, Norfolk Aggie.
Okay.
Yeah, she loves horses, all that stuff. And that school, honestly, we didn't grow up with horses. Jill didn't and my family didn't. But if it's your thing, if you love that kind of, those hobbies and whatnot, she's really flourishing there. Not that she didn't flourish in Whitman because she had a good experience in Whitman schools, but I think really being able to apply in a unique setting the things that she loves has really been great for her.
Great. That's awesome. Well, that's all good stuff. Now, Shawn, what makes a guy that's a Whitman-Hanson homegrown guy want to run for Board of Selectment? Everybody has their little niche of what they think and I know you've done a bunch of articles and you've been pretty heavily involved with all aspects. You were on the Finance Committee, I believe. And can you tell the viewers that may be watching a little bit about that?
Yeah. I think, well, being in alternative ed, it's interesting because it's an area of the school district, not necessarily Whitman-Hanson, but generally speaking in school districts where you often don't have a whole lot of funding, but you have to do very, very difficult work. So without getting into the details.
Yep.
I felt that directly. I felt the pressures of being around children who are struggling, wanting to help, but feeling like the pressures of a system that just weren't able to help in a sense. Because logistically, it's very difficult to fund all the programs that you want to fund. And an alternative program is often a lot of turnover. It's an area of education that needs a whole lot of work. And that's kind of like my, that's my profession, that's my love, you know? But pretty quickly, I realized you can't teach in a bubble. And certainly in alternative ed, you're kind of on an island. And unless you start to work with the other community members, whether it's internally in the school or I started going to town meetings so that I could better understand, well, how does the financing work? You know, because it's obvious that we're kind of on the tail end. We're not getting a whole lot of financing, even despite the good intentions of people that want to help. So I kind of wanted to get to the root of the issue. And the root of the issue really is, in my opinion, at the local level. You really have to, for me, you really have to put in your time with understanding how a budget works. Understanding all of the complexities that go into the all, the different departments that we fund and the services that we want to provide. For anybody who's interested in that kind of thing, the Finance Committee is an excellent spot to start because you really get to learn the details about each department. You know, the logistical details. And so if you're interested in high level stuff, I think the Board of Selectmen is a good place to learn about policy and that kind of thing. But to really understand each department thoroughly, the Finance Committee is excellent. So I started literally just going to the Finance Committee and sitting and listening. Because again, when you're in a classroom and you're kind of in a bubble, you develop like your opinion or whatnot. But for me, I really wanted to have more of a global perspective about how things, how the budget really does come to be made and how is it that we can potentially get more funds and how is it we distribute funds and all that kind of thing. So it started with the Finance Committee, which was excellent. And then from there, I started to sit in more school committee meetings and then more Selectmen meetings. And actually, I thought it was really helpful, considering we're a region, to try to pay attention to what's going on in Hanson as well because even given the current budget situation, it's very difficult to advocate for the budget if you don't have a perspective about both towns. You know, Whitman may be working in one direction, finding some, finding like they're on a little bit more firm ground as far as financially. But if Hanson's struggling, then how do you put together a budget for the region? You know, so it's been, it's probably been six or seven years that I've been in a very deliberate way paying attention to the budget and the complexities of the budget. But I feel like now I'm at a point where I do have a thorough understanding of how these things work and ultimately how we can potentially get to where we want to go.
Okay. Well, while we're on the subject of talking budget, is there a certain direction that you feel the town should be heading in or each town? Or do you have any ideas of how we may share some of those things? I know that you've spent a lot of time, because I've seen you at school committee meetings for years.
Sure.
And I understood, I wasn't at a lot of Finance Committee meetings. We used to meet with you guys once a year, but... And I know that you go to Selectmen's meetings and it's a very complex issue because tax dollars come in.
Yeah.
And so much gets appropriated to each and every department and then so much gets appropriated to the school department. And we hear lots of times from different people, and I'm going to ask this question of candidates, of every candidate. How do we proceed to move forward? How do you perceive us? Do you think it's a long-term plan, a short-term plan?
Yeah.
Because people, when you talk budget and you talk finance, it's very complex.
Yeah.
It's your house budget blown up 50 times and then steroids more, you know, on that if it could be to get that point of view across. So talk a little bit about that, how you see it. And go back a little bit, if you can, to your time on the Finance Committee because it's very helpful for people to know where you stand on that because it's dollars and cents.
Yeah.
It's hardcore.
Yeah. Well, two things come to mind. First of all is, one, I think it is important to understand how the community came to where it's at. So paying attention to past practice.
Yes.
So what are the past practices pertaining to the budget that Whitman has undergone? Past town administrators, like the norms and practices that the Board of Selectmen, that they currently implement or that they have implemented, same thing with the Finance Committee. That stuff is important because there's history in that and there's important history that you want to understand. So you do really have to put some time into getting to know the people who've had a major influence on how things have come to be this way. But to complement that, something I've spent a lot of time doing is researching best practices. Because we not only want to think like, what does Whitman do and what has Whitman done? Or what does Hanson do and what have they done over the years? That's helpful, for sure. But we also want to look at, I think, some of the best towns in the state. North Borough is one that I continuously go back to and think, if they're winning awards for their budget, what did they do that we could potentially do? Not that we want to change Whitman in a crazy way because I think we do want to respect the traditions that we've held. But if we can make, we can continuously make small changes that are going to help us continuously improve, become more efficient, become more transparent, open up communication, then why shouldn't we do that? You know, and it's funny, in the time that I've spent researching this stuff, the state seems to have made this a priority. They put out, they publish best practices pertaining to finance, best practices pertaining to a budget document or best practices pertaining to a financial forecast. And you can read them and you can say, these are the clear recommendations, the steps that the state recommends that you implement if you're looking to achieve this end. So why shouldn't we do that? You know, why shouldn't we review what we're currently doing and then take some action steps to improve? And that's, I think, something that can be extremely valuable for our situation because, as you said, there's a lot of moving parts, especially where we're part of a region and the school is a major aspect of the budget. If you don't have a very deliberate and strategic way that you are analyzing all of those moving parts and you can't communicate that effectively with people who are obviously concerned about it, then you're going to feel more tension. And if we can alleviate tension and we can open up transparency and we can become more efficient, then why wouldn't we do that? You know, so that's where I've been really focusing my attention.
You're talking about best practices in history as being important.
Yeah.
And I think that is very important because history does play a factor in how we move forward. Although things have changed quite differently over the last 15 years than they have over the previous 15 years. So when you talk about best practices of other towns and implementing them in regional districts, do you have any opinions on that?
Well, what do you mean? Like, I feel like there's...
We're a regional school district.
Yeah.
Okay? And there's been discussions from both sides of the two towns about deregionalizing and that type of thing.
Sure.
Do you have any opinions on that?
Yeah, I certainly do. I think the best argument that I can make about that would be that of the three partners, so if it's the town of Whitman, the town of Hanson, and the region, I think for us to all move forward together, the thing that we really need to do is all of us need to be trying to become better. Opening up not only within our own departments in town in Whitman and becoming more efficient and implementing best practices, putting together a financial forecast, but also sharing that with the school district and having Hanson do the same. If we can do that, then as a true region, as a true partnership, then you can move forward together. You could have two members of the partnership that are doing all those things, that are taking steps to become more efficient, that are taking steps to implement, you know, a strategic plan and all of that good stuff. But if the third member isn't, you can only move, you can only move forward as much as, as much as the, in this case, the least member of the partnership. So if one member is struggling, then the whole, all of us struggle. And there's something in that. We have to learn to cooperate. We have to learn to communicate and cooperate together. We have to learn to find common ground. The, you know, over the past five years, oftentimes budgets have been really full of tension. One of my priorities is to alleviate that tension. If we can find a way to open up and be more cooperative, find more common ground and move forward together, then we help more kids. And that, for me, that really does kind of complete the loop, you know? Ultimately, I want to improve, I want to have quality services. I want to have a quality fire department. I want to have a quality police department. I want the services that people deserve, you know, and I want that to be responsive. We just can't do that if we're, if the budget process is full of tension. That's one of my major priorities, for sure.
Well, that's a good thing to do. The struggle is, how do we get there, I think? And I think a lot of people are thinking that. There's been discussions, would you, we have a regional school district and I've heard people say, well, maybe we should regionalize the Boards of Selectmen so they can better cooperate so we can maybe come out of a wash that way? I mean, there's all kinds of, I think that people are searching. And a guy like yourself that's searching, and I think other people, other candidates are searching for similar issues in different ways, it's how do we get there? And I'm not asking you how do we get there because it's difficult, but if you want to address that.
Sure.
I'm okay with it. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No.
But I'm just trying to, you know...
As somebody who grew up in Whitman and went to Whitman-Hanson, I think respecting our traditions is an important part of who I am. I can't imagine a deregionalized scenario. To me, that feels completely far-fetched. Anybody who stepped on the football field, anybody who sat in the portables, you know, people who have all these awesome memories, some of my best friends are from Hanson, you know? Couldn't imagine a Whitman without a Hanson. So for me, that's not a plausible, it's a plausible scenario, but that's not a scenario that I would consider at all. I think we need to respect our traditions and having a strong region is part of our tradition. Going back, my parents going to school there, you know, and thinking of all the great things that way. So it's not just best practices, I guess that's my point. It's also our traditions that we want to uphold. And if there are people from Hanson that I'm communicating with that are sharing those same thoughts and feelings and a shared goal of, we need to move forward together, it doesn't have to be full of tension. It doesn't have to be those, an individual maybe that comes into town that is cutthroat finance and that just wants to cut this and just wants to cut that and what if we regionalize, you know? Some of those ideas may be valid in certain isolated situations, don't get me wrong. But really, the people that I support, the people that I communicate with, the people that I want to work with in the future, that's not, that's not the direction that they want to go in or neither do I, so...
So basically, if I'm hearing you correct, you want to keep the region together, you want to keep this tradition and history together?
Yeah.
And find a way so all parties can come together and maybe have a better use of the funding sources that we have available to all of us?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so. And even just to bring it back closer to the Whitman Board of Selectmen, I spent a lot of time listening to a lot of the long-term members. And even just me sitting in there, I'm learning tons of really interesting, good stuff and I'm learning from them. So my perspective isn't to go in there and completely change everything that the Board of Selectmen does. I hope that I can uphold the good things that they've done and represent the position well and take small steps for, you know, subtle improvements in ways that we can kind of take a step forward. And I'm picking up where they left off, not eliminating what they've done and changing all those things, you know? I've come to really respect the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And like I said, I hope that when I'm elected, I can really represent them well.
Tradition and history, as you said, is a large part of what we're doing. You're talking about taking baby steps, if I'm hearing this correctly, to try and move forward to get all these things done. Do you think it's a very valuable thing for candidates to go to Selectmen's meetings and to go to Finance Committee meetings to get a full picture? Because as you know, people do just what you said. Somebody will come in and say, cut all these budgets and lash out about doing these things. But the history to it, does it play a big, a big, big role in it?
I think so. I think to do it right, you really need to put your time in and you need to do a ton of listening. I mean, I grew up here, so I feel like I have an advantage in that I know this place. It's like in my bones, you know? But as far as the nuts and bolts of, you know, running a town, there is, it is complex. It's a big role and it's not something that someone should take lightly. And I don't want to give anybody the impression that I'm taking it lightly because I think you do have to roll your sleeves up and you have to put your time in. You have to try to thoroughly learn this, I think, before you step into the role. That's, I don't want a big, I don't want to make any mistakes. I want to, the learning curve to be, before I step into the role, I want to ask, even if they're stupid questions, I want to, I've been asking a ton of questions. They would laugh if they were here. You know, if I don't know something, I ask. And that's how it's been over the last, you know, number of years. So that when this, when I step into the role, I feel comfortable and I can keep moving forward, not a drop-off in competency, for sure.
Changing up things just a little bit, in the town of Whitman, they have some big steps ahead of them. DPW building, potentially Whitman Middle School System, new school. How do you see that affecting what's coming in the future? And I know that's a pretty tough question, Shawn, but we've kind of gotten into budget.
Yeah.
And it's something that's been kicked around quite a bit. Kicking the can down the road is, I hate that analogy, but...
Sure.
The DPW is something that's very important and it's on a lot of people's minds and this new school being built in Whitman is also, it's already in the MSBA stage. So talk a little bit about that, if you can.
Well, connecting it to like kind of putting your time in and listening carefully, anybody who's done that knows that the DPW has been marginalized over the extended period of time. This is a project that really needs to be done and it needs the support of the town. And the middle school has been around for a while, obviously, and there are specifics to the renovation or lack thereof that are really problematic. So two really important problems. One thing that I've been spending a lot of time doing is working on financial policy. So if we have a debt policy that gives, gives people who are, you know, on boards, specific information, like a gauge, this is how much you should borrow, you don't want to go over this limit, you know, so like healthy limits that people who are making decisions can reasonably follow. If they look at best practices and say, look, for the towns that are considered to be really efficient, this is what their debt ratios are. So let's write a policy based on that. So the last couple of years, I've really been advocating with the town to do that. And just recently, they implemented some of this financial policy, which I think is outstanding. So now, when we start to think about, well, how much debt should we take on? What is the healthy amount of debt that a town our size should have? Well, we have a policy in place that the average person can read and get some sort of gauge, like, right now, we have really minimal debt. We're about to take on some debt. Well, again, what's the gauge? Like, how much is too much? How much is healthy? You know, and so I think that's one key tool that now that it's implemented will be really helpful. The second piece is, how do we strategically line these up? Because you don't want to take on too much debt all at one time. So if we know that the high school, for instance, the high school debt is going to come off, is going to come off the books in a couple of years, then it logically makes sense to take on some debt when some debt's going to come off the books. And that way, the townspeople aren't going to feel that in their, you know, in their household budget. So those are the kind of like strategic things that people who are doing financial planning should really take care to put into place. You know, as one major project comes off the books, that's a strategic time to add a project. And you do that, you think about the next 20 years and you think, when are things logically going to happen? And obviously, you can't lay everything out perfectly, but having people in the know doing that strategically for you, for the average taxpayer, it's going to prevent the crazy peaks and valleys and it's going to keep a more of a, you know, consistent tax basis, which I think is ideal when you're talking about debt.
Well, if you keep a consistent tax basis, it helps the projected plan as you move forward. And you put it perfectly, the high school's coming off in a few years and it's going to change the debt-to-income...
Ratio, yeah.
Ratio. I mean, because the town, let's face it, their only income is through taxation.
Yeah.
So the more that you lose debt, it gives you the opportunity to expand with taxation and still stay in with your ceilings. I know that Whitman did, was it the Collins Report?
Sure.
And was that what it was? I forget the name of it, but I think it was.
Yeah, they had a couple of...
A couple of reports to get what they should be with their plan, the financial plan and how they should spread it out. And if I remember correctly, they even had a town, a town meeting of department heads here in Whitman to discuss all of that.
Yeah.
You see that as a valuable tool?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I was, I had been advocating for a lot of those things as they were happening as well. Getting more consultants, financial consultants to give us active and, you know, give us active feedback about our finances. So bringing in a third-party consultant is, I think that's extremely valuable. So having people like the Collins Center come in, do a study that can then inform the policy that you write, I think that's, I want to be doing a lot more of that. I want more, more healthy audits. I want more healthy consultants. We wrote, we have a capital plan, but I want to make sure that that's up to date and thorough. Same thing with the strategic plan. We wrote a strategic plan now, but we want to make sure that we're adhering to it and following through and stuff. The budget document, this, I think, is an area that I think pretty quickly could be very helpful. Basically, a budget document is a comprehensive document that the average homeowner could read through to understand the budget. So we did implement, I think it was a grant a couple of years ago, to write a budget document, but we haven't started, but I think to make it that much better, I think would be ideal.
Well, Shawn, it's been a quick half hour. I'd like to give you a little bit, maybe like a minute, to look into the camera and tell the people of Whitman why they should vote for Shawn Kane. I think you've done an excellent job here today. And I was ecstatic that you came on and I'm hoping all the rest of the candidates come on so the viewers can see and have an opportunity. Why should they elect Shawn Kane?
I'm from Whitman and Whitman, like I said, is in my bones. I'm a weird townie that loves living here. I feel like I put my time in as far as getting to know the nuts and bolts of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the budget. And for me, I'd like to do a really good job implementing best practices and then serving the people well.
Shawn, thank you. We're ending today's show. My name is Bob Hayes. Bring it on. If you'd like to be on Bring It On, or if you'd like to see something on Bring It On, you can contact me at bobhayes4433@gmail.com. Or you can call me on my cell phone at 617-538-0189. Shawn, thank you for coming in for today's interview.
Thanks for having me.
And don't forget to watch Bring It On on WHCA.